Thank you. Hello, Ann.
Hi.
And Jeff and John.
Good evening, good evening.
My apologies, I just had to bail on the recodification meeting, so I'm eating dinner. How are you all?
Doing fine.
Excellent. There we go.
Yeah. It's 6:30 and we have a lot of agenda, so I'd like to get going. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. My name is Jeff Barnet Turner, I'm the Assistant Chair. Eli Bolling, our Chair, is unable to be with us tonight, so I will be conducting the meeting. And... Before we get started, I would ask you to remain muted until you wish to speak, and then first raise your hand. And I will, when I have an opportunity to recognize you, I will, and then you can speak. I'd like to take any public input on items that are not on the agenda. Okay. I have one announcement. Actually, I have two. For the past week, I've been suffering from a nasty bronchitis, and the doctors assure me that I will get better at some time, but I will have some challenges speaking tonight, so I'll do the best that I can. The more important announcement is that tonight is the last night of the, excuse me, the 40R survey of public opinion for the Limited Commercial District. That's available on the town website. And I would really encourage everyone who's in attendance at this meeting, and if you've already filled it out, to fill it out, and if you already have, to contact people that you know and have them fill it out, because it will be taken down tonight to have the information collated. Okay. So the first item on our agenda is a continuation of the public hearing with National Grid concerning conduit construction at Summer and Beach Streets. I'd like a motion to bring this meeting back to order.
So moved, Jeff.
Okay, I think we have both moved in a second, John and Ann.
Yes.
This is a request to install a new manhole in, excuse me, 330 feet of trench for conduit beginning at a point in the middle of the intersection of Summer and Beach, and continuing approximately 346 feet in an eastward direction. And I believe... Steve Gang, are you here? No, it's not Steve Gang. Who is it? Matthew Farren.
Yes. Jeff, I was muted. This is Steve Gang.
Okay. Actually, I'm looking for the National Grid rep, and I think that's Matthew Farren. Is that correct?
Yes, that's me. Can you hear me, Jeff?
I can hear you now. Okay, Matthew, last week when we met on this, excuse me, two weeks ago, we asked for a couple of conditions on this, that you start after Columbus Day, October 12, and that the work take place at night, preferably starting after 9 o'clock. You were going to go back and check with your people about that, and I wonder how that worked out.
Yes, so we have done that. You requested that we start after Columbus Day. That won't be a problem. We most likely won't begin construction of this until springtime. You also asked if we could perform the work at night, and we can. Our civil crew would prefer to have their night hours to be 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
That's fine. That's fine, but you're not going to start this work until spring?
That's correct, yes.
When do you expect to be done?
I'm not exactly sure on a time for them, but to build the manhole and to put in the 330 feet roughly of the duct bank, I would imagine it would be a week, probably not longer than two.
Is there a reason? Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm curious, if we're not, if the work is not going to be done for another six months, does it make sense that we approve this now, so far in advance?
I mean, we need the time to be able to get the resources together to be able to do this. When the job has been completed on our design side of everything, that's just how our normal process flows. Once the design's done, then we take it to town petition if anything needs to be done in the public way. And then the job continues there on afterwards to, you know, schedule our resources and make sure our guys are scheduled to do that work.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Jeff.
I assume that you're going to notify Chuck Damm, the DPW Director, when you're coming on site.
We certainly can, yes.
That would be a condition of this approval.
Jeff, I have a question, question for Matt. Matt, when we met a couple of weeks ago, I mean, our impression was it was the fall. Has something changed that has pushed this off to the spring? I can't recall exactly what your expectations were in terms of scheduling then.
No, nothing had changed as far as I was aware. I don't believe that, I don't think anybody really wants to open the road, you know, so getting close to November.
Okay, okay.
I think it was always planned to have, be starting in the spring.
Okay, all right. I'm just wondering what the typical lead times are for projects that you folks work on? Do you need like, you know, three or four months to? I mean, I'm sure you're planning ahead, but I don't know when you start to pull the trigger in terms of real planning. But springtime is, that's a ways off.
Having worked for the company for a few years, the more time we have, the better.
I would, I would like to stipulate, though, that if there's any change, any variation or deviation from this plan, that it needs to come back to the board, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to ask Greg if you have any comment on approving this tonight?
No, I don't. I think it's fine for you to do that. As Becky indicated, we would certainly stipulate that it would be, you know, any changes would have to come back before you, but I don't think, I don't think there's a harm in giving it approval this evening, given the various conditions you want to put on, and and having to abide by that when they, when they get to it.
Okay.
Jeff, I have one other, I'd like to just expand a little on the stipulation you were, you were saying regarding DPW.
Yeah.
That if National Grid would fill out a DPW road opening permit as part of the process, once the Board of Selectmen has given approval, I think that should be part of the recommendation or requirement.
I'd like to know when spring is going to come.
Ann, we all would.
Yeah, but this is, this is, this is the National Grid spring that I'm interested in.
Yeah.
So I think, I think the question, Matthew, is whether, when would be the earliest you would start this?
I have absolutely no idea. I'm not in charge of scheduling. I'm not in charge of
Okay.
getting things on the ground. I didn't do this job. I'm just the guy that's presenting it.
Then I think we want to stipulate that you would be done by May 15.
To be done by May 15.
Yeah.
Okay, so noted.
Okay. Anybody else on the board?
I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, miss, but I think you asked a question that I didn't get to answer.
Which one?
DPW road opening permit.
Yeah.
I believe permits are filled up before any time we dig in the road. I will certainly make note of that to the, the other engineers and the crews that are going to be involved in this, but I believe that's standard procedure.
Okay, I just, this is something that Chuck, the head of DPW, brought up to me specifically, specifically regarding National Grid, so that's why I mentioned it this evening, that the road opening permit from National Grid. So as long as that's done, that'd be great. And how much notice would we receive once you decide to, or once National Grid decides to start, just so that we can make sure we have the needed people available?
So you'd like to be notified when we start?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
So you would like to be notified when we start?
Before you start, so that we can be prepared.
Becky, I believe that's in the, in the road opening permit.
Great, thank you.
When they would start, when, when work is expected to commence.
Perfect.
You, Jeffrey, I didn't know that, but thank you.
Okay, so any other comments from the board?
Just to make sure that the road is returned to as good, or hopefully better, condition when the work is done.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any public comment? Please raise your hand. Okay, none noted. I'd like to get a motion to close the evidentiary portion of our hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And Mr. Barnet Turner says yes. Okay, now, the motion itself. This is a motion to grant National Grid a permit to install a new manhole and 330 feet of trenching conduit, cement trenching conduit, beginning at a point approximately zero feet north of the center line of the intersection of Beach Street and Summer Street, and continuing approximately 346 feet in an east direction. The conditions of this permit are that a road opening permit is submitted prior to the start of any work in a timely manner, that the work starts after October 12, but I guess that's a moot point, that there's a nighttime restriction, and that the crew will be on, in place, starting at 10 o'clock until 6 a.m., that you return the road to similar or better condition as with any construction like this.
And done by May 15.
Right.
And that the work is completed by May 15.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Harrison?
You're muted, Ann.
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Barnet Turner votes yes. Okay. Matthew?
Thank you all very much. Do appreciate you coming on.
Thank you. All right. Next item on agenda is the F-22 goals and priorities for FY-22 budget. And I'm going to turn this one over to Greg, so I can talk first.
Okay. Well, off to a good start. Jeff, thank you. So yes, it, though it seems early, it is time for department heads and the need to get underway. I'm crafting the budget for FY-22, which will be presented to voters at, assuming, a springtown meeting in April. We're certainly hoping for that. So it is very helpful to have you folks give us some indication as to your goals and priorities. In particular, you know, this past year, we, for this current year, and when we were debating the budget in the spring, we decided to make some reductions in expenditures in order to keep the tax rate level. And so instead of the typical 2% to 2.5% tax hike that, that we normally ask voters to support, this current year's budget required that we had a level funding of the tax rate. So the main impact that that had was to curtail some of our capital spending. We have been working hard to play catch-up on our infrastructure needs, and have worked hard to put in place a rolling five-year plan that allows us to, to catch up on our, on our deferred infrastructure needs. So we've been doing well on that. Obviously, we have slipped in this current year because of the, because of the lower amount of taxation, and thus we trimmed a number of capital projects. We did a little bit of operating, but the majority of the reductions came from the, from the capital budget. So it's hope, it's looking forward to your decisions here, but I've heard from the Finance Committee, they are of an opinion that we should get back on track with capital, and that they would support going forward with the more normal 2% to 2.5% tax increase in order to have the funds to continue on the capital plan as well as operating. And so that is an indication that they have given, and need to hear from you as well. And then if you have other priorities in mind, in terms of different Department of Operations, that you feel need a particular focus or not, and if there are new initiatives that you have particularly interested, this is a good time to be airing those, so that we can start thinking about how we get those into the budget. So obviously, this isn't the be and an end-all to your guidance. It's really the beginning. But it does help us, the department heads and myself, put, as we craft the preliminary budget, it's very helpful to hear from you what your initial thoughts are on not only the total budget in terms of taxation, but also particular areas that you might have of interest and or concern, and that you would give us some initial guidance on. So that is what I was hoping we could have, have tonight for a discussion, here's some of your initial thoughts on these topics.
Greg, yep.
Any board comments?
Yeah, I have a question for Greg. And Greg, so it was level taxation last year, and if you go back the past three, four, five years or so, has there been a trend line that's more or less kind of 2% each year? I just can't recall.
It's really been closer to the 2.5% every year.
Okay, okay.
Of course, we did have the override for, well, not the override, but the debt exclusion for the new school.
Right, but excluding that, it's been a, the trend line has been around 2%, 2.5% then.
Correct.
So now we're, and, and we held the line last year, so that means we're continuing that trend line, but at a lower level. It's parallel, but at a slightly lower level.
That's correct.
Okay, and has the Finance Committee said anything about that? I mean, they realize that, I'm sure.
Right.
But they're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
The Finance Committee, John, I think, is concerned about falling behind in capital improvements.
And that's why I bring that up, because that line now is a little bit lower, still trending at the same rate, but it's a little bit lower, and I was just...
Right, so they, bring it back up to where we had it in the last few years.
Well, you won't catch up, because you had a year that was flat. Unless you go to 5%.
Correct.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to do that.
No.
They weren't, they weren't advocating for that.
No, okay, so that's, that's, that's the point I'm trying to get at here.
Right, right. So yes, we slipped a year, but they prefer not to slip further.
Okay.
We were, I think, somewhat concerned about revenues last spring. And it appears that the revenues are, well, it's nice being a residential town, because we didn't lose anything from, or much, from other tax sources. But right now, my feeling is, yes, we should, we should pick up capital projects, and in particular, we should look very hard at picking up the operating costs, the operating expenses that we cut, which affect, reduce the effectiveness of the town government. So I would restore the operating first, and then restore as much as we can within 2.5% of the capital.
So your priority would be operating over capex?
Yes.
Okay, we have, we have a number of large capital expenses. There's the town contribution to the rotunda grants that we're trying to get to repair the rotunda. There's restoring the money that was cut from the Fire Engine, Fire Engine Fund. There's, excuse me, the Sweeney Park Engineering Study. And there's whatever happens with Senior Center. So those are just five that came right to the top of my head.
And Jeff, if I'm, if I may jump in, talking about the Senior Center and the, what potential options are being looked at for the LCD. You know, I wonder if that's something we marry in, in there, where hopefully, or potentially, we can have an aging-in-place facility or something along those lines. So I'm, I'm wondering if it, if it, you know, I know, we desperately need something now. I don't know if there's a way that we could come up with a temporary interim. But I, I just think we have a lot of massive changes coming in the next several years. And if there are ways that we can look down the road and apply monies then, as opposed to spending now, and then in five years' time, have a different, better solution. That's one thing. One of the other things that I really would like to look at coming up with fiscal year '22 is how we approach education and how it may be morphing with what is our new reality for the foreseeable future. I think that's something that we really greatly need to look at. And my last one, point that I'd like to support would be DPW's been under-supported financially for some time now. And they're the ones who keep our town looking, not only looking nice, but the roads drivable and maintained. So those are what my focuses would be right now.
Okay. John?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the 2.5% that you indicated. I agree that five is very, very, that's not, that's not really reasonable. That's, that's not really reasonable. I did look at the, the budget and how things were kind of moved around, I guess, for the Plan B, where there were certain operating costs that were cut. I would agree with Ann that we should look at the operating things first. But one thing in particular, I'm, I'm, I need some information on, is the school budget, because this whole, whole thing is, includes the school budget, which of course will come out of the school committee, and we're not sure where that's going to be, and in fact, I don't think they're sure where it's going to be, because those costs are really kind of influx depending upon how things evolve over the coming months. And I think we have to keep some level of flexibility here, because hybrid models are more expensive than remote models, and I mean, we're not as close to that as the school committee is, but I think that's a little bit of a wild card here.
The school committee budget process is actually just getting underway as well.
Yes.
And, and you're correct, that there are a lot of unknowns, including what happens over the next several months with reintegrating students into the schools.
Right.
So I think that we're going to be running parallel processes, and we need to look at, on the town side, what our needs are. And then, as we have in the past, look at both the town and the school, and, and see where we need to go from here. I want to clarify one thing that Becky said, which is in regards to the 40R, the Limited Commercial District, and Senior, Senior Center. I don't think that the plan is to create a senior center of the Senior Activity Center and office space for the Council on Agent in the Limited Commercial District. That would defeat our purposes in trying to increase tax revenue through other sources. The idea of promoting a assisted living in the Limited Commercial District is a very interesting idea, and it has been proposed in discussions that I've heard. So those two things are different items. A assisted living center is a commercial operation, and the Senior Center is a town operation. The Senior Activity Center is a town operation. So I think we need to keep those clearly separated.
It's still town land up there. It's still town land up there. And if that's where you have the bulk of seniors residing, wouldn't it make sense to have a senior center where you have a larger percentage?
Where, where do you get the bulk of seniors that are going to be residing in the Limited Commercial District?
I guess that was actually a leap on my part.
Well, there would need to be dramatically different housing plan for the LCD. There may be seniors in 40B.
Talking 40B, I'm talking 40R, which has, you know, it has to be 50% residential up there for mixed, if you do the mixed use. Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm diverting this process, and that's not what I meant to do, nor should we. So pulling back on that and redirecting my comment, Jeff, I just think that, that how we're going to be growing over the next several years and being extra cautious in terms of, excuse me. Excuse me, sneeze, but just being extra cautious, but I, and in terms of the tax hike, I'd be more in favor of 2% as opposed to two and a half.
Okay.
Further, further comment on the senior center discussions that we're having, is that something that might affect our fiscal '22 budget? If something comes around to that?
Yep.
Okay, I'd put that on the list, Jeff. I'd put that pretty high on my, on my list.
Further discussion of the senior center?
Yes, but we've had various discussions about how things might evolve there.
Yes.
With both locations.
Yes.
And I don't know what'll happen over the next six months to 18 months, but something very well could, and that would directly affect this budget, and I would certainly put it, add it to the rotunda and the fire engine fund and Sweeney Park and whatever else you had mentioned.
Right.
Slightly off topic. Has there been any progress on the assessment of the Masonic Building?
We're, we are close to having an assessor finally getting started, the Prazer, I should say.
Prazer, yes.
So yes, it's, it's taking a little while to get the eyes down, but we're, we're close to having that underway.
And equally, sort of off topic, would it be possible to put the Tuxpoint ramp project into a special town meeting so that the funds could be used immediately rather than after the 1st of July, so we don't lose two full years?
So I don't foresee holding a meeting prior to April.
No, no.
But we can do a special, or we can just appropriate those funds, not an existing fund, rather than new taxation for the fiscal year. So in either case, there are ways to have it get started in early spring.
Okay, so this is a general discussion. We're going to get it down into the weeds a lot more as we go along. But I'm hearing various ideas about whether to prior, prioritize the restoration of operating expense or CapEx, and what items would fall underneath each of those. Are there any other comments that board members want to make? Okay. So there's no need for any vote at this point. But we will certainly be taking this up in future meetings as we develop the budget. I want to move on. Our next item, excuse me, our next item is a 40B project update. And Greg, I'm gonna give it back to you.
Sure, thank you. So as you know, we did receive the extensive submittals from the applicant for a project on Upper School Street. This is on land, about 20 or 23 acres or so, land that is across from that water avenue. It's undeveloped land currently, and the applicant is proposing fairly large apartment complex, that'd be 157 units, mixture of one bedroom, mostly one bedroom, like 80 or so one bedroom, and then two bedroom, as well as 16 or so three-bedroom units. So this, as a 40B enables, because it's a 40B, the, the project applicant has the ability to basically not follow to the letter our zoning regulations, so they are able to have a more dense project, a larger project, et cetera, than is normally called for zoning due to the fact that we do not have a minimum of 10% of our, our housing stock as designated formally as affordable housing. So as indicated to you in an article in Cricket, the process gets underway more seriously now, so the next step would be for you to host a meeting with the applicant, where they would provide a fairly in-depth presentation to you and the public about the proposal. And between now and that meeting, it would be helpful for you to receive input from different boards and committees. And I know that Eli has reached out, chairs of the various land use boards in particular, as well as a few others, to provide some input as, as we get underway. So the applicant would like to proceed along the lines of what is affectionately called a friendly 40B, meaning that the applicant seeks to enter into a development agreement with you as leaders of the community prior to the formal permitting process getting underway. And so they would like to meet with you over the course of the next few months to see if there are ways for them to mitigate the impacts that you see from the project. And if you and the developer come to an agreement as to what, A, those impacts are, and what the mitigation measures best be. So we'll undertake the, the next few months to, to go through that negotiating process. And so I would suggest that we hold that initial meeting either the end of October or early November. That would give us the next few weeks to continue to prepare and review the materials, and to receive input, both public input and from the boards and committees in particular. So anticipating that we go through a negotiating process and we conclude that negotiation process, let's, let's say by end of January. If, if the conclusion is indeed an agreement is signed, then that becomes sort of a launching pad for the developer to then proceed with their formal permitting process before the ZBA, the zoning board adjustment. So the zoning board is the, is the formal permitting granting authority locally. And they, they issue what is called a comprehensive permit, and it consolidates the review process of all the different boards into the plan, the, I'm sorry, the zoning board. That process gets underway whether or not you have entered into a development agreement. If you have a development agreement, then that becomes a good starting point for the developer as they present to the ZBA, and the ZBA would most likely then would incorporate that agreement within their permit that they eventually grant. If there is no development agreement, then you, as a board and other boards as well, can basically present testimony before the ZBA in, in hopes that the ZBA incorporates your suggestions, but the developer doesn't have to agree to those. If the ZBA puts it into their final permit, then the developer always has the option of appealing to the state. And the state is the ultimate decider in 40B projects when we don't, when we don't qualify what are called the safe harbor qualifications. And those, those safe harbors, meaning that we would be able to block a 40B, there are three of them. One is, one is if we are over the 10% for affordable housing, we are not, we're a little under 5%. Another is if the total amount of land in town that is devoted currently to affordable housing is over 1.5%. We don't meet that threshold either. We're, we're under 1% of total lands. The senior housing, both at the Plains and Newport Park, and also the few houses up on Lonely Place Low, Road, those projects qualify as affordable, but their land total falls quite a bit short of that 1.5% of total land mass, even after taking out land set aside for conservation and other mutual uses. The third safe harbor is whether or not we have made substantial progress on our housing production plan. And again, while efforts have certainly been undertaken to try to advance that plan, we, we don't have new units to show for it at this time. So we don't qualify for any of those three safe harbors, meaning that the project as a 40B can proceed, and ultimately, the state can say, yes, it can go forward. So I think it behooves us, as we have talked about in the past, to undertake an effort to see if we can come to an agreement with the developer. And so we should use the next few months to do, to do so, and the next step in that is setting a meeting. You could target the last Monday in October, I believe that's the 26th, if I forgot that correct. We could target that as a special meeting for you, where the developer would come in to, to give a fairly detailed presentation for the submittals, and that would be the kickoff really of our discussions with them about the project and potential mitigations that could be agreed to in order for the project to go forward. So tonight, really, need your thoughts on when we should hold the, the meeting, and any other thoughts you have in terms of diving into the details of the project and discussing potential, potential mitigating, mitigating measures.
Do we need to make a vote on the meeting date?
No, we don't need a formal vote, but if you want to target that, I can certainly get, you know, if they're nodding on their heads that that, that is a good date, then I can get back with the developers and see if that works for them, and then we can proceed from there.
Okay. Let me just poll the board on that item as to whether that's acceptable in terms of the initial presentation. This is not particularly a negotiating session, more clarification of what, excuse me, the project entails. So I want to take a quick poll, the board, John?
Yes, yes.
That's okay.
Yep, 26 is good.
Um, there's a lot of material in that, in that present, in the, not in the presentation, but in what they have given us already.
Yes.
Yeah, 170 pages of traffic study, for instance. Are we really going to absorb all of that in another three weeks with everything else, anything else that we're going on?
A lot of it is data. I've gone through some of it, Ann, like the, the traffic study is really 46 pages, and then 150 pages of printouts that you probably don't want to look at, but I agree, it's a lot of stuff. I've started to wade through it.
And you certainly don't, you shouldn't feel like you have to have everything studied and memorized and ready for a test come, come the 26th, it's really.
Know where there are pitfalls, and one of them is the way that they have decided that they will evaluate the cost of the schools. Because, while it's true that adding one child costs very little in, in terms of actual, if you add a whole classroom, you've got 20 times 18,000. And not, it's, you know, as in the airplane example, you put somebody into an empty seat, that's profit, no matter how little. If you put somebody in and you now have to fly another airplane, that's a big problem. So I haven't studied that in any depth, and I plan to.
Greg, is, is it expected that the input that is coming from, say, the other boards that are involved here, that would come after October? We don't have to assimilate that other information as well prior to this. This is really, for October 26th, it's just becoming familiar with the materials provided by, what is it, Strategic Land Ventures, the proposal?
That, right, that's correct. Obviously, it's helpful to have some feedback from different boards by then, but again, it's not the, it's not the deadline for feedback, and that there'd be ample opportunity going forward from that, from that point. But again, it's, it's your decision as to when you would ever say, okay, we're ready to enter into agreement. If you need more information and you need more consultation with boards, you, you take that time.
My concern is that we have two relatively unencumbered months, and then we get into Christmas and, you know, December, and it's relative, relatively hard to make time for things. And if you're hoping to have an agreement by January, I think that's optimistic.
Yeah, so maybe February, maybe March. So I agree with that. There's just a comment on the chat, someone wanted to know when the plans might be available. And so we had put the submittals on the town website, so those are available to the public, just like they are to, to the different board members as well.
If, if the person's interested, they just go to town website and type in 40B, and it will come up. You look for what Mr. Fetter Spiel has provided, and it's right on there.
And it comes in several, multiple pieces.
Many pieces.
Like 30.
Yes.
Exactly, lots. And Tiffany just did the direct link, so that's great. Greg, my question with, with, and I, I don't necessarily have a problem meeting October 26th, if that's our, our, our first one. There's no way I will be able to get through everything by that time with work and other obligations. Do we have, is, is town council looking over this at, at this point?
So we do have the ability to bring in John Witten in particular, who is, is well-versed, he gave the overview, if you recall. And so, yes, we can rely on his expertise to help us go through this and to figure out what it, what it all means.
Great, because I, I personally think it would be nice to have John's feedback prior to, prior to meeting with the developers. What do you think? What's, what's your, do you think that's not as critical?
Well, I think it'd be very helpful to have at least the initial take on what he can. Well, I think it'd be very helpful to have at least the initial take on what he can, what he thinks of the, the materials. Again, it's not the final be all, but, but an initial review and some initial comments certainly would be helpful.
All right, thank you.
I'm not trying to, to force you on the October meeting. If you, if you're more comfortable pushing out a couple of weeks and do it mid-November, that's, that's okay. You should, you should do what you're comfortable doing.
I would probably personally feel better pushing it out a little bit then. I don't know how everybody else feels. And I'm happy certainly to do what the majority would like at this point. It's just, I'd be a little more comfortable with a little more time to chew on this.
I, I'm a little bit concerned about that in light of what Ann just said. And this is not a primary negotiation session. This is an initial presentation. Gives them an opportunity to, you know, polish it up and present it to us in the clearest way that they can. So I would tend towards going for the 26th and then having an opportunity to go back, reconnoitre, talk further with our committees and have a second meeting with them during November.
There is a conflict on the 26th with the planning board meeting.
Okay.
So later that week potentially, or?
I, I think the planning board was the 19th. Sue Brown just put in the chat that it's the 26th. Okay.
Sue?
Yes, it's the 26th. And we're meeting with the Board of Selectmen on the 19th to go over the zoning changes, so. The planning board typically has the, the fourth.
Yeah, so the 19th is going over recodification with the planning board.
Or if, or if the time of the presentation could be juggled somehow, I'm not sure if you, if you're set on a time. I know there's a lot to work around.
Any conflicts with the 27th?
Yes.
And, and yes.
Yes, there is a conflict?
Yes, there is a conflict. Yep.
Yeah, there is a conflict. I don't know if it matters, but ZBA meeting is on the 28th.
29?
Think that's a, let's see.
31st?
No. Wide open.
How about the 29th?
I don't have anything at this moment.
That would also allow members of the planning board to participate in this. Any objection with Greg approaching, excuse me, approaching them on this?
Sounds like a, sounds like it's okay.
As long as it works for the developers.
Yeah, we'll give it a try.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? As long as?
I said, as long as it works for the developers. Will this be posted on the calendar then as well? Town calendar?
Absolutely. Start meeting. There's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, yes.
I was just answering Steve Gang, basically.
I think he's looking for a clarification if the public will be asked to comment at that particular meeting? Or will it primarily be a presentation?
Greg?
So it's up to you how you want to handle that. I think that, I think some clarifying questions certainly might be helpful. I don't know if it, it's, it's not a time to really debate the merits of it. It's really a time to understand what they're proposing. So I think questions along the lines of what they're proposing and then clarifications rather than the merits for this initial meeting. This is probably more appropriate. There, there'll certainly be ample time to talk about merits, you know, as we get into it. But I think initially, I think we want to try to understand as fully as possible what the project is. So the answer is yes, I think you can allow some questions, but I think they should be targeted towards understanding what the proposal is.
Any other board comments?
Just that, just that as Becky had suggested, we want to make sure we get John Witten's comments or overview before that date.
Maybe by Monday, the 26th?
Good.
If not sooner?
Right. Thank you, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'm only 15 minutes behind. Our next item on the agenda is COVID-19 updates. And Greg, I'm sorry to say, step two, three.
No, have to, have to run through this fairly, fairly quickly. So I think as most of you know, the governor has announced moving into step two of phase three. We were in phase one for quite a while since early July. Not a big impact on us here in Manchester because we don't have indoor performance venues. That was one of the things that is now allowed to open up at 50% capacity, up to 250 people. Outdoor performance venues, again, that's something we have. They can have 50% of what they normally have, again, up to 250 people. Arcades, indoor skating rinks, laser games, those sort of things all allowed now at 50% capacity. Fitting rooms are allowed to open up, retail stores, gyms, museums, libraries. All now able to operate at 50% of normal capacity. So those are the, the bigger changes in going to step two of phase three. This is for communities that are not in the red, if you will. Being in the red means you have eight cases per 100,000 or more. So we are, we are not in that category, thankfully. We, we continue to have very low, low cases that we know about. So that's all good. The limit to indoor gatherings is still at 25. That did not change. Outdoor gatherings and private backyards. Residences, et cetera, that is still kept at 50 people. I'm sorry, it's gone up to 50? No, I think it remains at 50. In any case, it's 50. Outdoor gatherings in, in public settings did increase from 50 to 100. In addition, in a previous modification, the governor did allow restaurants to seat up to 10 people at a table rather than the six that was the, that was allowed. And seating, serving food at bars is now allowed as well. As long as the six-foot separation is maintained or there is like a plexiglass divider between people at the bar. So those, those are some other changes that have occurred. So people are, are nervous, I would say, as we head into the fall here. Less, less ability to be outdoors as the weather cools down. And certainly with schools, whether universities, colleges, high schools, et cetera. Getting, or other schools getting elementary as well, as those ramp up to, to in-person. I think there's just a degree of nervousness. We are seeing an uptick in, in cases in the state. They seem to be really focused on, are being caused by parties where people are getting together in larger groups. A lot of, a lot of that's being driven by college campuses, I think, and college students in general. But we are seeing increases. And the, the infection rate has, has gone up. And so there, I, I think it's fair to say there's a fair amount of nervousness, even though there's a real desire to continue to open up. So that's just some, what's happening sort of at the macro level of the state. Like I say, not too large of an impact here in town. The MAC can, can be up to 50% now with this, with this new ruling. And as I said, the restaurants can have a bigger, bigger gatherings at a single table. So things continue to, to go fairly well in town, I'm pleased to say. As I say, our cases, we have not seen any significant uptick. And we'll see what the rest of the fall brings. And concern obviously about flu season coming in, having flu and, and COVID to deal with at the same time. But hopefully we'll continue to have the good track record that we've, we've had over the last few months.
And
Go ahead.
In regard to flu season, I just wanted to make a comment that there are going to be flu shots by appointment at town hall on Wednesday. And you need to make the appointment ahead of time. And all that detail is on the website.
Yeah, so certainly encouraging folks to get their flu shots either, either through public mirrors at town hall or through your own physician or at a, the drugstores that provide that as well. Multiple opportunities there. So I think that brings us up to talking a bit about Halloween. And the plans for this, this year. Again, a COVID Halloween, so we have some recommendations that a group, Park and Rec and some Board of Health folks, Tom Keough and others who have been traditionally involved, you know, has always set forward and done a great job putting together a nice event. I think the, to sum it up, this year is trying to keep large crowds down and sticking to your neighborhood for the most part, rather than having everyone converge on the village. Streets around Norwood, Brook, that area, which has always been sort of the hotspot, if you will, for, for Halloween, trick or treating to, to avoid that this year. So we don't have big crowds in one area. So Jeff, I don't know if you'd like Tom to walk, walk through this?
Tom, would you like to join us at this point? You need to unmute yourself. Oh, and maybe I do. Hold on.
All right, how's that?
That's better.
All right, thank you. Jeff, by the way, I got into Manchester without any State of New Hampshire cruisers behind me, so I feel safe and blessed.
I was talking at 6 o'clock, actually about 26 with Tom, and he was in Cock in New Hampshire. We won't discuss how we got here.
Nice, Tom.
Yes, I, I've been, I've been on the meeting for approximately four minutes at the present moment, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I think Greg gave you some detail on, on this. What we tried to do this year was take people who traditionally put parts of the Halloween celebration together kind of as individuals and put them together as a group, including the Community Center, the Manchester Mothers Club, the Police, Police Patrolman's Association and the Halloween Committee. And got them together for a meeting to try and come up with activities that could be enjoyed, but hopefully be enjoyed safely. So what we, what we presented to you is a, a list of, of these activities and this same list is being presented to the Board of Health. We took in, into consideration the CDC guidelines for those things that were low risk, moderate risk and high risk. And everything that we've done in terms of the 24th with the Community Center pumpkin pickup, the house decorating, on getting ready for that. The Halloween Committee and police doing a register and pick up goodie bags are all in the low risk. The only thing that is in the moderate risk category is the, the trick or treating. Which we're, as Greg has already mentioned, we are working on, you can see that we're not going to block off any roads. Which creates the kind of party atmosphere between Norwood Avenue, Desmond Avenue, Brook Street, Allen Avenue and Vine Street, that area of the village. And just people being with all kinds of people, you know, with them and, and traveling in large packs. We've also worked to keep the trick or treating early. And this is for two different reasons. One, it will keep down, hopefully, the trick or treating by the, the older kids. Who might be the ones who would not be there with their parents and might have a little bit more problem with staying socially distanced. And it also does create the time where we would be getting the people off the streets just as dusk happens in case there is any kind of an increase with triple E and West Nile virus. Last year, we did move the trick or treating suggested time to earlier to, in, in response to that. Right now, the Board of Health is reporting fewer positive tests on mosquitoes in the pools in Manchester than last year. So we're hoping it keeps that way. The other thing that we have asked the Board of Health to do is to give us some, give us some messaging, which would be the best way to express this and get this out. We know that we're not going to be having the trick or treating police. If someone's out trick or treating at 7 o'clock at night and there are still people there giving things out. We're not going to go around and say, oh no, we're not supposed to be doing this. But we're going to strongly encourage that the trick or treating in their own neighborhoods happen for just a short period of time. And you can see at the bottom, it does say, you know, no doorbells are approaching houses. And residents who don't feel comfortable to participate should stay in their homes. So that would mean that they would hopefully keep their front porch lights off and they wouldn't have anybody out front encouraging people to come up and talk to them. So with that, I'll open it up and see if anyone has any questions about the, the plan or anything that you want to comment on the plan.
I think it sounds very good.
Jeff, you're muted.
I, I have one particular comment. Thank you, Ann. Which is, the Board of Selectmen is firmly in line with the fact that no streets will be blocked off. in line with the fact that no streets will be blocked off. So that crowds don't get concentrated. Regarding the other aspects of this, take comments from the board, but I don't think we have much to say in terms of what people actually do other than we support these recommendations. And any resolution by the board to support these, these recommendations would be contingent on further review on Thursday by the Board of Health. And the fact that they did not lessen the restrictions that they're suggesting.
Tom, I would like to say this, this looks so well thought out and, and just so many just different aspects that have been really attended to. You all just really did a nice job for the, the kids who are missing out on so, so much right now. So this looks, just my, my sincere thanks to you and the whole group who've done this.
Thank you, Becky.
Also, are there any more of the 375th puzzles left?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yes.
Seriously, Becky. The chair is going to mute Becky.
I wouldn't blame the chair.
John?
Tom, you got my 100% support on this. I think it's great.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Okay, so it seems like there's a consensus. I would actually like to put this in the form of a motion in support of the planned presentation to the Board of Health for their review and acceptance of the Board of Health's decision, unless there is some lessening of the restrictions. In which case, if you come back to the Board of Selectmen.
I support that.
Is that a second?
Second. If Becky's wasn't a second.
Okay. I'll take, roll call vote. John round?
Yes, yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Absolutely.
Mr. Boyd, return us, yes. Tom, good luck at the Board of Health.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, and, and echoing the other comments, thank you for all your work on this.
All right, thank you. Do you want me to stay on for the 375th Anniversary Celebration Committee?
Sure. If you don't mind.
Yeah, hold on one second, Tom. Give me a paper.
Is that under consent agenda?
It is under consent agenda.
Yeah.
Since, since we are well past 7:15, which was the last item that was timed in the agenda. I think we could take that item up right now. It's in the consent agenda. If, this is the only item. I'm going to pull it out of the consent agenda for a minute. And basically, it's a proposal to do some moving lighting on the Town Common that would project snowflakes up on the church and on the Town Hall. First Parish Church has agreed to this. And they plan to use the carol on system in the church, which is speaker system that allows the community to hear music from the church. To protect carols half an hour every evening.
What we realize is that there will be no big celebration and, you know, huge First Parish Church full of people when they have the lighting of the friendship tree. In fact, the friendship tree will probably just get lit at some point after Thanksgiving, probably without a notification to stop the gathering of people there. But what we hope to be able to do is to have an illumination of the two buildings. And then also have the carol on play seasonal music or Christmas carols for a half hour every night. So if people are downtown, they can stop and listen, or they, you know, we'll get it out in the paper that it's, you know, what the time is. We, we're looking for just after the six o'clock bells ring, basically, until, for about a half an hour until roughly 6:30 every night, and just to kind of, shall we say, bring a little joy and also have it early enough because it is dark then, so families can bring down younger children and, and have some of the joy that they missed because they can't have the musical performance at the First Parish Church or anything, anything with the gathering afterwards with the cocoa and the lighting of the tree.
Thank you, Tom. So that's a consent agenda item. I'm going to slip it back into the consent agenda. But I wanted to have him have an opportunity to say what he had to say without having to hang around until we get to it.
I've, I've got one question, Jeff.
Yes.
And that is, Tom, how long would this go for? How many days? Do you, have you envisioned a time period here? Understood it would start probably the evening when you light the tree, but, but how?
Yeah, and then, and then go to Christmas Eve or Christmas night, something like that, John, yeah.
Okay.
So it, it might be a total of 30 days. I haven't actually looked to see when Thanksgiving is this year. But it might be 30 days all total.
Okay, so somewhere, maybe it's a day or two after Christmas or something, but somewhere in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can update you that, yes, Christmas carols are available. In fact, I think those chimes, the carolons do play Christmas carols seasonally and have done for a number of years. And we can, and there are others that are available and we, I, I know that that's being worked on so that that can be done at this time, at the six o'clock or 6:30 time when the light show goes on.
Thank you, John. I know you're part of the team that's been working on that.
Yep.
The, the snowflakes polychromatic, exploding? Or just nice white snowflakes?
Uh, they're, they're the same, they're the same projectors that people sometimes use to project them on the front of their homes. And we've been working with Chuck Damm to get coverage. And, and I think there'd just be the white snowflakes moving on the buildings.
That would be much nicer. Thank you.
Are there any issues, Tom, about security of those projectors?
I hope not. You, you can't say definitely not, but we've, we've got two already and we're trying to make sure that we have enough coverage. And if we need to get a third one, we'll get a third one.
And what, where, where will the power be coming from?
There's a handhole in the new Town Common, kind of at the bottom, of the central bottom of the, of the stairs from the front of Town Hall.
Yep.
And that's where the power will come from.
And, and I know this is probably answered, but will there be a means by which the cords will be secured to the ground so they're not tripping hazards?
Yeah, we've, we've kind of let Chuck give us, Chuck Damm give us guidance on that. And we're waiting to hear back from him. We've met with Chuck Damm and Sean Johnson out at the new, new Common and by that handhole to go over that. But we, there will not be a safety issue.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome.
Okay, I'd like to move on. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Have a good night.
Good night, Tom.
Thanks.
Night.
Take it easy after that drive.
Back to our COVID update, merchant support ideas.
So this, you know, is an ongoing challenge and looking to see if you have some, perhaps some new ideas with the holiday season coming. That maybe there are ways that we can help help the businesses in town through promotion, certainly shop local has a heightened, heightened meaning this year. And will be very important for the stability of our, of our retailers in town. And so there's been some conversations that are getting underway. We'd like to continue those over the next few weeks to see what we might be able to put into place. There was a new flyer that was developed during the revised Festival by the Sea. And that indicated, listed all the, all the businesses in town, all the shops and restaurants. And also indicated where parking, public parking is located, in addition to the on-street parking. And so that's something that we can perhaps have a second printing and make sure there's are well distributed around town. Perhaps they are put out, you know, on the entrance ways of, of businesses or on the parking posts and some sort of a holder for them. Need to make sure they're secure and that the wind doesn't get, weather doesn't get at them. Keep them dry and in place rather than wet and blowing around. So, so some challenges there, but, you know, maybe some temporary signboards, et cetera, indicating listing businesses in different sections of town. That might be something that we can do, you know, helping on our website, perhaps we do some joint promotions that we can make available. Tend to shy away from that during normal times, just in terms of, you know, public sector and private businesses. But maybe this is a time where we blur those distinctions a bit, just because of the unusual circumstances. I will say that we are offering a second round of grants to small businesses. These are businesses with five employees or less, including the owner. We, we do have, we still have some remaining 10,000, up to $10,000 grants available for such businesses in town. They can be home-based or, or retail. And don't, doesn't have to be retail, any, any shop or any business that's operating, whether that they're in a brick and mortar or out of the home. So those are still available. We are making another second round. So they'll be, do, next round is due at the end of the month. We'll get another email out to all businesses that we have emails for to remind them of this. But it is something that we want to encourage people to apply for. There are income thresholds over which disqualifies the owner, but if you're under those thresholds, then you, you do qualify. And we encourage those who do qualify to put in the submittals. And again, we'll, we'll publicize those, but I did want to put that out there. We just got the word the other day that they'll be doing a second round because the first round was not, did not take all the monies that were allocated to the town. So we do have that ability to do a second round. So the, the main focus here is to hear what ideas you might have. We hope to meet with some business folks later this week to have a more in-depth conversation about what, what they see as beneficial and ways that we might help facilitate some cooperative advertising, some other ways of, of promotion. So it's in hearing your thoughts, if, if you have some ideas that you might want us to pursue.
I wanted to share a note that I received from Eli that he is in support of doing temporary signage around the downtown area to list merchants and help to direct people towards them. And also to emphasize where parking is. He, he also made a suggestion about a better map on the town website, maybe a QR code on those brochures for phones to scan.
That's a great idea. I was, I was also thinking, you know, along what Eli was saying regarding signage, wondering, I think typically we're not supposed to have sandwich boards out. But I think as much help as we can offer regarding signage is sort of some of the least we can do. Regarding Festival by the Sea, and I know that needs to be rethought, but is there a way that without too much contact, we could possibly do weekly raffles of some sort where if an item is raffled off and won? I don't know, I'm trying to think of ways to get people in to the shops a little bit more, but spread out.
So you're suggesting that the chamber runs such a raffle?
I don't know. I honestly don't know, Jeff. I'm just wondering, is that, what, what legally? I know the town's hands are are tied in a lot of ways. So I don't really know to what extent we're legally allowed to do things. And I'm looking at the Bridge Cape Anne that somebody just said, and I, I've seen this before for ideas. Has anybody else checked that out?
I've looked at it.
Okay, I'm not seeing a lot of things there, but anyway. I would like to hear what the, what the merchants themselves, how they feel we might be able to help them.
Well, so we hope to hear from them this week.
Because you just don't want to ask them to continue, to do coupons and discounts further. It's already been tough enough for them, but I don't, I don't know. Other than as Eli suggested, signage would be very good.
I think one of the issues with sandwich boards becomes the issue of inclement weather.
Right, well, that wouldn't go beyond the holidays. You know, I wouldn't imagine at this point.
And you're assuming our drought is going to continue right through Christmas?
Absolutely. No, you can bring a sandwich board in if the weather gets bad, but.
And there's also the ADA issues of not all of our sidewalks are as wide as they might be.
True, true. Yep.
Perhaps it can be, perhaps there can be some kind of suggestions from businesses when they meet with Greg that we can be supportive of.
Maybe we could even ask, you know, just ask the townspeople, what, what's going to help? Maybe we could even ask, you know, just ask the townspeople, what, what's going to help incentivize you?
Right. So that people get off their computers and go into the shops.
Exactly.
So any other comments or concerns or ideas that people want to make?
So we'll, we'll see what the merchants have to say. We'll try to reach out to folks, maybe do a little mini polling. And we'll hopefully bring back to you on the 19th some, some more, some more ideas.
Okay, good. Thank you. We certainly want to support them. Greg, do you have any idea whether they're planning any kind of Christmas by the Sea?
Yes, they are. Again, they're trying to see what, how best to shape that. And I think this, we can dovetail some of our thoughts with them on that and see if it's something we can help with.
I think Festival of by the Sea is usually a big, big outdoor fun event, outdoor, indoor.
That's, that's a separate event.
The Festival by the Sea?
We've already had it.
Oh, Holiday by the Sea, sorry.
It's like a Christmas stroll. It was some, something like a late afternoon, four hours.
Yep, yep.
I think that's worked in the past years, hasn't it, Greg?
Yeah, definitely. You know, you know, Santa Claus arrives by boat and.
And that afternoon was the, whatever. Yeah, okay.
We gotta be careful about Santa Claus in the boat.
Correct. So yeah, we need to, Santa may have some different plans this year.
Well, I had one suggestion just texted to me. What about, what, not that there are a lot of them, but what about a sort of bit of forgiveness on parking for retail businesses?
What does that mean?
What do you think it means?
Does it mean having the people who work in the shops take the parking spaces that should be used by customers?
No, it means that our local constabulary, who, which are very nice anyway, are a little more lenient with parking tickets.
Which leads to people who are there for over two hours, taking up spaces that could be used by somebody who wants to go in shopping.
It could go both ways. I know. I'm, I'm just, it's just a, just a thought that someone sent out.
Okay. To save you from interpreting other people's texts, I'm going to open this very briefly to public comment. If there's any public comments about how we might be as supportive as possible to our businesses as we approach the holiday season. So if you'd like to make a comment, just raise your hand on the, on the menu bar at the bottom and I'll recognize you. Okay. Seeing none, you can move on. Liaison project updates. So. Becky, do you have any planning board updates?
I do. Planning Board met on the 28th. There was a curb cut discussed. 40B LC, the 40B and the LCD were discussed. And we will be meeting with the planning board soon. Concom, they're working with Concom regarding the Surf Village water issue. And there is a 40B working group that, with the online forum where over 70 people attended. Then this evening, before this meeting, there was the planning board re-cutification meeting where various definitions were gone over just to sort of solidify some definitions, which will then be brought forward eventually to the town for parsing out and approval. There you go. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Jeff.
I have nothing new to report on open space and recreation plan. During the process of putting together all the information that they collected in their survey. Been a lot of surface. And Ann.
I have made some observations. I will be working on them next week, in the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll look forward to those on the 19th. Consent agenda, we have the board meetings from September 21st. We have the request for the elimination of Town Hall that Mr. Keel went over earlier. The affirmation of the plastic bag ban. The governor has rescinded his order, which temporarily allowed plastic bags to be given out in retail and grocery stores. And we are back to, excuse me, our existing ordinance. So this doesn't require us to vote on reinstating the ordinance. The governor has lifted his temporary ban on those ordinances. And our ordinance is now back in effect. So there should be no plastic bags being given out in stores, retail and grocery.
How do we make sure that they're aware of that?
So the Board of Health has communicated or will do a reminder. I know that we were in touch with Crosby's and they indicated that they were stopping as of last, last week sometime. So we can follow.
Okay, and that's the only store that does? We don't, Allen's or the Rich Dales, they don't do plastic?
Not that we're made aware of, but again, we can do, we can do a general reminder.
Hey, I just, I just think that we should, it would behoove us to do that.
Allen's continued to use plastic bags throughout, throughout the summer. Excuse me, paper bags throughout the summer.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think the governor also allowed reusable bags to be brought into the stores. And maybe the reminder could include that. We didn't, if the, those of us who use reusable bags don't have to do all our own bagging, the lines will go a little faster. I'm a slow bagger.
Okay. Other items in the consent agenda include the confirmation of legal counsel. And this is a, that letter that was in your packet at the end from Eli. That Greg, can you clarify the, the need to that?
Yeah, so this is actually part of our paperwork for reimbursement through the feds, through the COVID reimbursements that have been allowed, the CARES Act, and also with FEMA. They, they just want affirmation, confirmation of legal counsel. So Dan Brown from Philly and Brown is our labor, labor council. And then we use KP Law, as you know, for general counsel. And so having your affirmation of this as part of your consent agenda will allow Eli then to sign the the confirmation memo and get that as part of our reimbursement paperwork.
Okay. And finally, the general election warrant. And you'll notice that that was absent from your packet. And I contacted Greg before the meeting about that. Sonya graciously went to Town Hall and scanned it and emailed it to me. And I bounced that email onto each of you at the beginning of this meeting with a note in the chat to each of you. I was planning on putting it up on my screen and I can do that. But if you've taken an opportunity to open that while we've been talking, it's a fairly detailed and standard piece of procedure that has to occur prior to our having a general election. So we need to vote on this as part of the consent agenda. And if there's any questions about the general election warrant, I would entertain them now.
Where specifically did, is this from, from, where did it come from?
It basically comes from the state.
Okay.
Secretary of State, and then we add our particulars in terms of our polling information. So it adds the fact that we have our polling at, at the high school this year.
Okay.
Okay, and that's also something that you all need to get to Town Hall to sign off on.
Yeah, so we'd love it to, if, assuming you approve this tonight, if you could come in over the next few days to actually sign it.
And I checked, I checked with Sonya, since Eli is out of town all week. I checked with Sonya and asked how many signatures are necessary, and she said a minimum of three.
Correct.
So the game is afoot.
I can go in tomorrow, so I'll get that. I'll be there.
Okay. That concludes our consent, consent agenda. Are there any last minute comments or concerns about the minutes of September 21st? Okay, then I need to take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of second.
And polling, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bodman Turner, both yours. All right, finally, we have our very talkative tonight, Town Administrator. Who has helped to get through this meeting. And his Town Administrator Report. Greg, you're on.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Thanks for running tonight's meeting. So first up, very pleased to announce that we will be having a new public health nurse, Mary Higgins, resident in town. Who's an RN, actually a nurse practitioner. Will be joining us as Pam retires once again. Pam's attorney has repeatedly helped, helped us out here. And she is doing a transition with, with Mary over the next couple of weeks and getting Mary up to speed. Mary's last assignment was actually doing contact tracing with COVID. So she's quite, quite familiar with those details. And obviously, that's a very helpful skill to bring to the table as we, we continue to deal with COVID.
Hopefully, third time is a charm for Pam.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, I think we're in good shape here. Very pleased to have Mary come on board, and she is too. So happy to make that announcement. Construction updates, the fall paving will get started in the next week or two. Moving to wrap up in early November, the focus will be repaving Raymond Street, Magnolia Avenue and Ocean Street as a follow-up to the pipe work that had taken place in those areas. The waterline work on Boardman Avenue and Harbor Street continues to go well. Actually, I should have brought the show and tell and maybe shared it in my video, but screen here, but I didn't. There's a great sample of the lining work that has taken place. It's quite remarkable, the lining that they can install in place on this, on the cast iron pipes. It makes a watertight seal and really improves the integrity and strength of those old pipes without having to dig them all up. So that's all well, and it continues to move along and we'll be wrapping up in the next couple of weeks there. People probably have noticed that the honor roll work has started on the Town Common. And so that'll be progressing for the next few weeks. And we're hoping that that can be wrapped up in time for a Veteran Day ceremony. And that's, that's what we're shooting for. At your next meeting on the 19th, we plan to do an update to some of the safety zones and speed limits in town. We've been talking about this and we're, we're ready to bring that forward to you in a, in a formal hearing for your, your formal votes. As you know, we're adjusting, rather than having a blanket safety zone encompassing much of the village. We will do more targeted safety zones and areas not in the safety zone will, will go to that 25 mile an hour standard. And then some of the outline streets, the upper end of Pine and School will be at that higher 35 mile an hour zone. So we'll anticipate doing that at your meeting on the 19th. Becky mentioned the 40 yard, there's large turnout. Great to see so many people on the first public forum. That's just the first of many that'll take place. We, we weren't able to get all the answers to the questions during the meeting itself, but we are working on those answers. And we'll be posting those answers this week and soliciting people's input. Jeff, you mentioned the, the survey and we'll be soliciting that. I think they're going to be extending that survey a few more days. We'll get that confirmed and get that notice out to people if indeed that's the case. But I think that's my understanding, is they're going to let that be open for a few more days.
But until we know that for sure, you should go and do it tonight.
Yes. Resident in town has been advocating for some pollinator gardens and plantings of flowers that natural flower, made of flowers that attract pollinators, bees and others. Could do a couple of pilot sites on some grounds that the DPW currently mows. So it saves us a little bit of mowing and hopefully bring in more butterflies and bees, which is a good thing. Conservation Commission has been involved with that and endorsed it as well. And finally, we are continuing to work on technology that allows us to do these virtual meetings as a hybrid meeting. Board members can be meeting in person with some distancing and yet can still be in the same room and project through the Zoom medium here. And the public can participate via Zoom, but allow board members the ability to interact in the same room, which a number of boards have, have really missed. And so we hope to be able to bring that onboard in the next, next few weeks or so. So stay tuned on that. So with that, I'll end and thank you for your time this evening.
Okay. Any questions or comments on Greg's report?
Thank you, Craig.
All right, fine. Any other matters that have not been reasonably anticipated by the chair? And I would entertain a motion.
To?
To adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Okay, polling, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bodman Turner gratefully says yes.
Thank you, Jeff.
Your voice made it.
I've gone through an entire package of clock clocks in this meeting.
I hope you're on the win.
I got a sugar high working now.
I hope you're on the winning end of this. I hope we're getting closer to the end.
Yeah. All mine.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Thank you very much and thank you all for participating. Good night.
Good night.